The TC Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloin. Famous homemade pony sauce. And don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call seven six five two four five two eight eight seven. We appreciate your business.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Cindy, you're standing up? You might as well.
I'm actually gonna let Dylan. I'm gonna tag team this depending on the question.
Where would you like me to... Can I come up here and talk to you guys? I've got a handout that I'm gonna walk through with you guys tonight. But I'm Dylan Lambert-Mont. Something that I don't know, but I'm here with Westler Engineering. And so, I've been working with Park and Cindy and Dr. Gooden from USDA for over a year. And so, what I want, hope to do today is kind of make sure everybody hears where we're at, where we're going. At this point in time, we'll be in Bloomingdale this evening at seven thirty. And then in Marshall tomorrow at six thirty.
I'm sorry, Dylan. May I have one? I was... While he was passing, I apologize. Thank you.
And I've got one extra. Okay. So we've... Gosh, it's been forty years since that part of the county's been working on this thing, right? But it's really... It's really looking like it might come together. So I felt like it'd be a good time to come to the towns and really just describe what's going on as far as the regional sewer district up there for Town of Marshall, Town of Bloomingdale, what used to be the high school, it's my high school, and then the park there. So the need is obvious. You know, there's no sewer systems up there. Very few septic systems even in place, even ones that are failing. People tie, connect tile and add. It's a big deal up there. So talk about what we know at this point. There's a lot we don't know. We continue to work through funding, rate studies, and those types of things. But I think we've got to the point now where we're ready to start spreading it out to the community. I'm adding a little bit more openly, and really this is the kickoff for that. So I guess where to go from there? The need's not new. It's the funding, I think, that's really gonna be hopefully in place now to make this affordable. Affordability is a huge part of this. So we currently have an application in to multiple funding agencies. They're submitted under the Town of Rockville's name at this point in time with the intent of at least getting this further down the road. And we're a little bit further down the road now. So what we're looking at doing is now starting to discuss and be prepared to take it to the county in the summer to talk about the regional sewer district again, okay? The intention is that both those towns and the park and the school, all that wastewater will flow to Rockville. So when we looked at the study back last spring, Roger Azar was on the team. He looked at your system and said, okay, what would it take for the Town of Rockville to accept all this flow, right? So included in the project right now is improvements to your system, to the Rockville system, to make sure it can accept those flows. We're talking manhole linings, upgrades to lift stations, and forest mains, and then working the plant also, okay? We've been working every two weeks. I appreciate Park, your time, and sit through all the meetings, just trying to keep the things moving forward. So Park's been involved, but it's also been Cindy. USDA's been there through all of this, and we appreciate that. Also, DNR has been a strong participant in that, and we appreciate having them at the table, part of those conversations. And then the Town of Marshall, Kevin Stewart from that board has been in there, and then Jerry Newton from Bloomingdale. So we've all been talking about this, but Bloomingdale, to extend it out to you guys. So right now, the proposed project is we're gonna have gravity sewer systems in the two towns. The wastewater plant that's at Turquera and State Park will get decommissioned. All that will get pumped to, first to Marshall, and then on, down the back road to here to Rockville. Bloomingdale will go down the county road the other way. We did look at going down forty-one. From a cost standpoint, it actually made sense. It was really surprising to go the two routes, but it did work out better that way. As far as the routes, you know, I think as we talk more in the county, there's probably different questions about who will be required to connect, who won't be required to connect. Perspective, you'll have a customer on there. It's the eight hundred new homes flowing, is what we're looking at, bringing to your communities. Between now and June, I think, is when we're gonna have to start doing outreach. So Cindy's gonna let us use the website. We'll start posting information about the project, about sewer systems in general, really for education for those customers that don't have a sewer system yet. But also, hopefully, it's a good resource for your customers and your constituents as you get questions. But it'll be anticipated as a regional district that will then send their wastewater flow to Rockville. We'll have to do a district board. That'll be part of that. We haven't formalized any of these things. This is over the next few months. But as the recipient of that flow, Town of Rockville will need to have an appointment on the board to be part of those discussions. I'm under funding. We're looking under every rock we can find to try to make this thing affordable. And appreciate USDA. We also have the PERM with the State Revolving Fund Program. Cindy has applied for grants. And also, because DNR is very interested in getting out of the wastewater business, hopefully they can step up as well. But it's not cheap. So what we wanna do is find a project that's sustainable. And I think USD will echo that, is that it has to be sustainable in terms of what the rates, the revenue, the rates will generate, not just to pay for the improvements to make sure this thing lasts forever. So operation, maintenance, staffing, and those types of things. So loans, forgivable loans, grants, all sources of funding we're pursuing. So currently, we've got application in. We actually submitted it last April to SRF. We'll renew that. We'll ask for a new cover letter from you guys to reflect some of the small tweaks that we've made in the technical portions of that report. That'll be by April first, SRF. We're working through an environmental process with, that's part of the rural development application program as well. So kind of running those things parallel to one another. We think we're about ready to start the outreach, which is kind of scary, but I think it's exciting too, right? And get the community to participate in this. So using the website, we've got flyers from the state. We'll create one-pagers for informational things for the public. We wanna bring the public together, so we'll probably do something. I don't know if it'll be at the fairgrounds, but like a public forum, public hearing, probably in May, I'm thinking roughly. That's a thirty-day public notice period, so it'll probably come out in Sentinel in April, air balance. Every property owner that's gonna be connected, we'll get an individual letter up there to the north. And then hopefully sometime around June, maybe, we're looking at talking to the council. And that's the plan. That's just the start. I mean, by gosh, we've got a... Then if it goes forward, then it goes to the state. That's potentially a six-month process. I mean, we're years away from the ribbon cutting on this, but we've come a long way. And so I wanted to walk through this with you guys today, open it up for questions. But really what I'm asking at this point in time is just knowing that you understand where we're at, knowing that you support where we're going with this project, even though we don't know exactly how it's gonna be funded, what the rates for those customers are gonna be, what your wholesale rate is for purchase. But really just ask for you to help us kind of check in and keep this thing going forward. It's not a commitment at this point in time. It's just more of a support type thing. As we move forward, we will ask in the future, potentially in May, the board to do a resolution as part of this as well. So just a heads up for something a couple months down the road. So there at the end, request would be just acknowledgement and support. Any concerns or question or feedback that you have, so that we can help start crafting and getting those answers to your questions that are on your mind. And then any letters of support, really from the public is, I think, where the weight of that would be. As we go to Bloomingdale, I think that'll be a bigger conversation in Marshall and those. So that's kind of my rundown. Appreciate you letting go through that. Cindy or Dr. Gooden, I don't know if you guys wanna add anything to that?
Dylan, really, the only thing we're gonna add is, is I know everybody always gets concerned about the cost, and that's one thing you kind of mentioned. We're gonna make this sustainable, where it's gonna be self-sufficient. We wanna come in to USDA, we wanna build a foundation. We'll let the communities build on top of that foundation with smart growth, not just growing out everywhere. So the ideal part of this is the fact that by using wastewater plants, we're saving farmland as well and it'll help feed us and our next generations as we go down the road. So we will guarantee you this, when we come to the table, we bring OCA, we bring State Revolving Fund. You're not gonna drive down the road and find a cheaper product somewhere else. When we get here and we sit down and we start talking about this, we guarantee you this is gonna be the cheapest you could've got it anywhere. So it's one of those deals. There won't be anything left on the table. Whenever we get here, we'll make sure that everything's done correctly. And Dylan's done a bang-up job. Rick has been involved. Rick Protasia here has been the kind of the point person, lead person on the project. Rick, you wanna stand up so those folks can see you? But really, that's all we've got, Dylan or Cindy. We are able to answer questions if you have any questions that you may wanna ask us. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So you don't need a resolution at this point?
Not right now. Before we go to the council, I think, is currently how we're thinking that. So right now, we're maybe council in June, who knows? You know, potentially in May.
Okay.
But at some point in time in the near future.
Well, I'd just like to emphasize that from the Rockville point of view, where we're just processing the wastewater is all we're doing. And there'd be no cost to our current customer base. I mean, that'll be factored in the cost for the customers up north. It's, you know, cost capital and processing, everything will be in that rate, whatever it turns out to be. So we're just kinda like the prison. We meter the flow and process it and charge a fee. So that's all we're doing here. I think it's about a hundred and ten thousand gallons a day in dry, days where we're at. But long-term, it's very important for the...
It's a very worthy project.
Northern Park County and future growth, and just a very important project.
Questions?
So you're leaning more towards Bloomingdale Road than forty-one?
Yes, we looked at both options. Easements comes into play in a big part as far as going down the state highway. And not, we don't wanna be in the highway right away with the infrastructure. So it really just kind of surprised me when it shook out on paper that that really was a cost-viable way to do it, but it is, so.
And those are gonna be forest mains or forest...
That's correct.
Yeah.
So a lot of long forest main. Really, it's not easily connectable for somebody that's adjacent to that forest main pipe. But it's really just to get that gravity system like you have here, move all that flow into Rockville.
And as far as once you get to Rockville, we're looking at coming in Marshall Road, coming down probably Virginia or Erie, one of those two. I believe Bloomingdale Road would come in and go down to, well, we call it the Bill Brown Lift Station. Yeah, just west of forty-one.
So yeah, so that was a big thing that Roger helped with when we looked at this. It's like, all right, we've got, here's the flow, here's generally our connection points. How can we get it through town, you know, to the plant? So he was critical in that.
Thank you.
Cindy, anything to add?
No, I think we did everything, and they know where to find me if they have questions, for sure.
Well, thanks for having me, and I appreciate your time.
Well, thanks, Dylan. Thank you. Good luck at your next meeting.
I do wanna make it clear, though, to the public of Rockville, we, this will be no cost to our customers. So just wanted to put that out there and make sure everybody understands that, so. So are you ready then, Brandy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or not, here's a resolution, so.
I guess not.
I just have a couple of quick things. I do have claims, one batch of claims will be the end of the month there. That was live for fifty-six thousand nine twenty fifty-three.
Okay.
And we have our first few days of March here that we've got claims for two fifty-four eighty, two fifty-one.
See, I know, I know, I see on the end of February, we had that video work.
Yes. That was for wastewater.
Right, right, wastewater. That's part of that Jackson, Voorhees. We're trying to keep that project going forward. Good information in that. We're still processing that on the stormwater board. But bottom line is, gonna come back to town board. We're gonna have to do some sewer repair on Jackson and Voorhees. We'll probably do one street at a time. The cost is what we're studying right now. There's multiple options of floor replacement and SIP, and we're working with DES on that. So yeah, we need to do laterals. We've figured out in our discussions on that. I don't know if I had anything.
I haven't gotten the cost for those quite yet, but really, what it came down to is you can either re-line the pipes or you can put in new. New's obviously gonna last longer than it was, twenty-five percent more. Get double wipes out of it. So really, the decision we came to is if you're gonna tear everything up, let's tear it all up. Let's fix it all at once. Do it right?
So anyway, that's what that bill is. I think on the other major claims here, nothing out of the ordinary there at all. So I move to approve.
Second.
The, let's see. I do have billing adjustments for forty-nine, fifty-seven, forty-two. There are quite a few actual water leaks. Most of these, we still do have residents bring in documentation that they've repaired their leaks, so we're tracking that. So I've got receipts and stuff attached if there's any questions on any of those.
Okay.
Call in favor.
And then I only have one more thing on. Ask Nick to help prepare this resolution for me. The fire department, I understand, will be receiving innkeepers, a percentage of innkeeper's tax for fire equipment. There's a state board of account approved fund number four four one zero that we can deposit all innkeeper's tax revenue for use by the town fire department. So I would like to establish that ordinance for them to accumulate funds in that department, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Any idea on the kind of numbers we're talking about on that? Does anybody have any asking there?
Is it ten? Well, I don't know on the number, but I think...
And is there any restriction on how it's used, I wonder?
Jim, I think Jim has all the information. It was something that was established. Was it done in the council meeting by the county? Do you recall that recently on the innkeepers? I think it came from...
I don't attend the council meeting, so I don't know.
Or yeah, it was on the council meeting, probably not commissioner's meeting.
What this just does is allow for the money to be deposited in the funds and directs her to keep paperwork and receipts and things of how the money is used. So it doesn't talk about how much is deposited or things like that, or restrictions on its usage. That would be the innkeeper's, whatever that statute is, talks about usage. This just allows for it to go into that fund instead of whatever fund she was putting in. In general, probably, I'm guessing.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't receiving anything. This was kind of new for the fire department. So but that particular fund number was approved by the state in order to accept those revenue funds for the fire, so.
So all you're doing is designating that fund to be the one where it deposits, and then you're still bound by all the restrictions that would normally apply to it.
Is that it?
Okay.
Bill, you're up.
First up, stats. February twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred and seventy-nine police, seventeen were intentionally violent, thirty-one cases, nine crashes, six ten pounds, five alarm calls, eleven arrests, thirty-nine ECWS entries, two felonies, seven misdemeanor, fifteen infractions, eight ordinance violations, and thirty-eight warnings. Same time last year, we had four hundred and fifty-five calls, thirty-four cases, five crashes, two impounds, fifteen arrests, thirty-two entries, twelve felonies, sixteen misdemeanor, eight infractions, and thirty-five warnings. We just received Glock forty-fives from the prosecutor's office. We're currently training this week to transition to those. We would like permission after Nick does a little bit of research to the possibility to sell those, or if we have to, to advertise and take bids. So Danny, we'd like permission to sell those and use that, those funds, to buy more Glock forty-fives for the reserve and part-time officers so that eventually we can get everybody using the same weapon.
We'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
So the state has a SERP team, and the prosecutor advised us of something that we... Those are one of those things where the state just says, hey, we've come up with this new thing, you're gonna do it. This is a victim approach for talking to the victim. You wanna come from a victim standpoint. Most officers we're dealing with, you know, trying to arrest the suspect and not necessarily as much with the victim. That's been my experience. Most victims for the SERP team are probably gonna be female, and most likely would wanna talk to another female versus a male officer. So our plan would be to use Officer Jim Teal. That being said, this is just kind of a heads up that we will probably have a memorandum of understanding that needs signed. So just kind of a heads up type deal for that, and that's where I'll end.
Well, Doug?
Yeah. Just little things we've gotten done here real quick. The pole and power lines behind the wastewater treatment plant has been removed. I'm sure these have been sent back there, so we should be in pretty good shape back there. The lift station, thirty-six lift station that we've been having some trouble with, still not fixed one hundred percent. They did call and say we have a VFD that is a bad. So when they get done with that, the total cost to repair that lift station's gonna be thirty-one hundred dollars. That's after the computer had been put in and then VFD. So they're coming, in about a week, we can hopefully fix that lift station. So that is in progress. The mixers for the towers will be installed this week. They showed up today. So we'll be helping out with just a little. We have to supply the power for them, so we'll be done.
That's the water.
The water goes into towers.
This is from the, by...
Yeah, USG, the...
Plant we have.
Yeah, the water plant.
Well, Pierless, is this Pierless Midwest? Just the... No, this is Viola. Viola. Is it Viola?
But they changed their name a couple times.
Okay, they keep changing their name. Okay.
Like USG or something like that.
It's USG now?
I believe.
Okay.
Then today, we did complete with all the employees except for Tony. We did CPR training this morning. Tony didn't do it because he brought me his card from the fire department.
Did Andy teach him?
Who? Yeah, the insurance did that. And the pool gate is up, waiting on one part. So that'll be completed. And then just some things. One thing I'd like to bring up with this water project that's going on right now. We made a repair, a couple things. Mike and Tony and Mike Pettis has been able to repair a fire hydrant and some other things that was gonna be in the project that no longer has to be. So there's a little bit of money, and we're wanting to change a twelve-inch valve that were on Rockville Road. And then a valve, which I think is six or eight, I'm not sure, over by Rick's Auto Repair. So I talked to Boyer today, and he said with the money that we're saving, that'll be able to work that in with little to no cost change. So that is something I'll be looking into and getting back with you. Soon as I get more information, I'll send an email or a text out to you.
Make sure that's all documented.
We will, and everything. So, but yeah. And then into this weekend, I was with some of you on the park. This weekend, I was at the park with my granddaughter and nieces. The Mary go around the shop. So I've got caution tape on it, and we're gonna remove it totally this week, just to... I met with Luke Walts last week, and we're looking into a new one with some of the insurance money and some other funding. But I don't think it's, we need to just get it out.
Insurance money?
A little bit of the insurance money from the storm damage that went through there.
About ten thousand. Can we use it for that?
We can. The only thing is, is like, there was a little bit of money on the slide, so we'll have to go through where the slide is, bend a little bit, or we have to straighten that up and take pictures, send to the insurance company. As long as it's corrected, we can do whatever we want with that money.
Okay.
So everything will be corrected. Anything we don't use, then we're gonna put that toward America around. So just letting you know, we'll be removing that this week. And then the pipe followers for the parking lot are here. We're gonna try to get them installed as quick as possible for the protective lights of the parking lot. And then the one-twenty water, Tim and I had sat down with Bailey on the phone and everything to get that started. That is not, it's gonna be time-consuming, but not as what we thought it was gonna be for this year. Got part of it done, and they've already been working every day on it and everything. So that's, we will, should succeed pretty quick on that and everything. It's just gonna take a lot of, a lot of time opening all the water meters. We have to just identify right now what the water line is in the meters, so. Change down the road, but that's all we have to get done now. And then I will start job interviews this, later this week for replace the...
There was a question, came up about our application for utility positions. Yeah, there, Nick. Yeah, we apparently don't have on there about any existing prior felonies on the application?
I believe we do actually do a background check. We do a background check.
Should we, or can we have that on the application?
What do you want it to say?
I'm not sure. I was just asked this question, and I just asking, uh...
Well, I get, I mean, what's the question? Have you had a...
Our policy says that can't have a felony conviction, but we don't have anything on the application asking that.
Right, but we do a background check.
But you sign a, you sign a release or something, but you'll have one done.
And in my past experience with setting down an interview, we, and we ask them and tell them that we're gonna be searching. And even I had, we had one of them tell us that he had a clean background record, and we got four pages of clean background. So I'm not sure they're really gonna mark it, they have the...
You're entitled to put that on there, but it's no better than whoever signs it.
Okay, okay.
You still need to do a background check. It's not gonna waive the need to do that.
Okay, okay, just curious.
And that is complete with our applications we got? I've already had that done.
Okay.
So, 'cause I... As long as you're doing it, I mean, you could put it on there if you wanted to, but it's really no worth more than what the ink is that runs, so.
Yeah, and they are told multiple times in the interview that, you know, we're gonna do a background check. So they have plenty of opportunities to come forward and tell us that.
Okay, good.
And everything. So then the last is, I have the Strawberry Road Lift, remember a while back, or pump? We had to pull. So I got today a price to rebuild that with a new impeller, new seals and everything, which is quite a bit cheaper than I was expecting, at four thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Well, I'll move to have that.
Okay.
Let's get that before it goes up.
And then last is...
Strawberry Lift Station pump.
The pump's bad?
No, I had to get a quote on rebuild it because we put a new one in it, and this is a backup.
Okay.
And the lineman, electric department, has multiple things here on day-to-day operations, you know?
He just asked for stuff.
Huh?
He just asked for stuff.
Yeah, transformers and stuff. So these are just cutouts, bolts, and tape, day-to-day operation, some lights, arms for security lights and everything. So all that will come to the cost of twelve thousand... to the cost of $12,167.55.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I got. If you got questions?
I do. I have a question on our water project. Are you guys documenting, I mean, making ass builds, doing something?
They are taking pictures and supposed to be writing down all that stuff. And that's also helps us on the 120 water because there's places on there where that area, we can actually put photos. So they can actually see that we have changed it and all that. So yes, they're documenting.
So our water department's doing that?
Yes. Tony and Mike and then Tim Honaker will be going out doing some photos and he's the one that's helping me on the computer. But yeah, and like I said, Bailey said any pictures just makes it that much better when they go looking.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we definitely need some kind of ass builds.
Yes.
I mean, it'd be good even on our storm and sanitary, if, you know, we're building something up, it'd be good to.
Yeah, they've all been instructed to take pictures of any, anything they dig up and the repair. So we have records to go back.
Once we have the pictures, where do we, are we storing them on?
Yes, they're on the computer down there. He's actually going to, we're going to set it up street by street.
Okay.
So if, you know, something happens on Voorhees down the road, we could go to that file instead of just having to flip through picture after picture after picture. So, but yeah, we're trying to get it organized. So it's a lot easier for.
Yeah, good idea.
This is just a little thing, but are you guys able to back up on anything though? Have them save that to a hard drive or?
Yeah, we can. We can do that.
Something happens that computer down there, you lost all of your work.
He's actually added some to a flash drive that he has found.
All of ours goes back to the server, but I just for down there, make sure they're, if they're backing it up after they do any work onto a flash drive and taking that, having that something.
Yeah.
I need for him to do all that work in that computer, go out.
Exactly.
So and if you need flash drives, I think I have some more here, but I can get you some.
Okay, yeah. I know he has added to some that we have found that has some water stuff on it.
Yeah.
He's added some of the stuff we've already done.
Okay.
So it's on there too.
Yeah, I just like for him to back it up.
Okay.
Just in case.
Exactly, yeah.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Well, two things. The Peerless Midwest, you know, we signed a contract with them, I believe, to do some rehab of the water field wells. You heard anything from them?
We're.
They have already pulled the motor pin. Hopefully it comes back this Friday.
So they, they passed start it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good to hear. Yeah, it's a big project for us out there. Yeah, another question. Well, I don't, I just need to bring it up, I guess. Not really a necessary question. You know, there was a contractor on South Market brought up an issue with a water line from West Pennsylvania, Michigan to Market. You know, they thought perhaps we would want to know the condition and perhaps we would like to address it while they're in the neighborhood. I don't really want to give more detail on that.
They actually, with the response I got back, we would have had done that. It's in. They're waiting on, I think tomorrow, we should get his water sample test back.
Okay.
If that passes, then tomorrow or the next day, he is going to make the taps and hook up to Michigan. And then that will complete, once they're done with that, I believe that will complete Boyer's part of the Barca Street job. The water part should be done.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, good to know.
Can you go ahead and get that loaded on, please?
Oh, yeah, I move to approve that.
Second.
Third second. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, I just wanted to add, you guys have DES already under contract as part of the Overholtin' Wonder Project, complete ass builds. I've been working with Doug to get them done. When I'm done, I plan on handing over a digital copy and a paper copy of all our maps and stuff that you can have your reference utilize.
Great.
GPS coordinates for everything, if you can't find it or it gets paged over.
One last thing, I think last meeting I asked about the flow meters and actually their hour meters on the pumps and the pits.
Yeah, they're actually hour meters.
And UMAC, what's the fellow's name? Bruce?
Bruce, my friend.
Bruce, yeah, Bruce.
He's over there.
Yeah, hi Bruce.
He's only here after two weeks.
I know, I'm old. I can't remember stuff like he's. Anyway, yeah, he sent some great information about the daily flow down there by month for like the last five years. So you know, the next, next objective or goal should be to take this information and get it along with the hour meter and by location and see if we can just isolate. We think we know it's Virginia Holler and where's the other one?
Bill Brown's.
Bill Brown's station, but we need to try to figure out further based on data where the maximum amount of inflow stormwater is coming from and then back up the, go back up the lines from the lift stations and see what we can do. But so slowly, you've got, you get that?
I don't believe I got that for a hang of it.
Okay.
I can get it.
I sent it to him.
You know, basically that, we just have hour meter data for the last year. So we just have, you know, 2023 flow data, get that to Doug and he can have his guys try to get that computerized and see what we can learn. But yeah, it's good stuff. Exciting.
Yeah. There's actually charts on that watchdog system we have down there.
Uh huh.
So I think we can just go into it and add like the rainbow and then it'll actually come up with a chart and everything.
Are they in caller?
Huh?
Oh, really?
Yes.
Well, can you bring something to me?
Well, yeah.
That'd be great. Okay. All right. That's all I got.
Sure.
Yep.
Randy, you want to? Okay, good. Good deal. Troy, you got anything? Mike?
No, sir.
Bruce?
I do.
I remembered you were here, so.
We, we're replacing the blowers at the plant, you know, it was a three-phase. We did one already. You guys bought the last one, it came in last fall, but it's not installed yet. And I got a quote from Sycamore Engineering to install it for $8,144. I sent it to Randy. I'm not sure she made a count the other night.
Well, I did. And now that you mentioned that, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
So I, maybe it's in another form.
Actually, I think that's like $2,000 cheaper than the first one.
I'll make a motion.
Somebody want to say get that? All in favor?
The only other thing I have is I would like to get permission to haul some sludge off down there to seed another plant. And that's to live. I mean, it's going to save you money. That's that much.
Yeah, what do you want to do?
Wants to remove some sludge.
Yeah.
Plant that we're starting up.
Oh.
And it's going to save you money because that's sludge that you won't have to haul off.
What do they want? Why do they want?
It's a new plant.
Start it up.
Start it up.
Is part of the, is it kind of seasoned the plant?
Yes, it's called seeding.
Like you, okay. So you want to, okay, well, that's interesting. Okay, well, I, you need a motion.
He likes talking.
I'll move.
That's why I feel bad.
All in favor?
Yeah, I said that a while ago. I mean.
Okay.
So that's all you got, Bruce?
That's all I have.
Okay. Mark, do you have any old business?
Well, you know, I think y'all received this email from Brandy of the most recent IP bill. It's really interesting to look at this because it's the biggest bill we pay every month on a regular basis. And good stuff in there, you know, you have your energy charge, your demand charge, and you have your monthly contract be in there for, when it come out and do work for us. So yeah, if you had the time, if you had not had time to look at it, I highly encourage you to do so.
Very interesting.
It is, it is. You know, we have two, we have the whole stormwater board here, including me. I don't think any comments from stormwater board from a recent meeting.
Careful, you don't want to have a meeting in a.
Well, no, we're not having a meeting. I'm just, you know, if anybody wants to. Nope.
We're not making decisions.
No. But yeah, I brought up the sewer issue earlier in the meeting, so.
You want to comment? Because I think in all fairness, at that meeting, we kind of had leaned towards replacement.
Yes, we are.
And not SIP and not the other ways.
Yes, sure.
So I'd like the board to be aware of the fact that that's what we're planning on submitting.
And we'll be bringing, you know, I'll be bringing more detail back to this board once we get that.
That new district project that they were talking about at the beginning?
Yeah.
That is, the very first part of that project is to work on the INI problems for the town. So the town's going to get their INI problems taken care of.
It, it's a good thing for the town.
It is, definitely a good thing.
And it's really good for Northern Park County because they need it severely up there and it allows for some future growth that they just don't have now. What?
Anybody else have any old business? Any new business? It's $36,000.
Yeah, that's the one. I just wanted to, I gotta, I brought it up, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any public comment?
Just one thing, kind of old business. And just, you know, getting crews fixed out in the garlic about Main Street. Couple of requests, because I'm the excellent liaison to y'all. Is we'd like to request, number one, at some point to get the, before we get real busy, get the star down off the Christmas tree. It needs relit, rewired, and they're going to take care of that. And the other thing was that Mary and Gary Nicola are going to purchase on behalf of Main Street, like a snowman bench. I can send you all pictures of it. It's not huge, but it's heavy and cumbersome. And I think there'll be maybe two of them, one on the north side square and one on the south side square for the hometown holidays and during Christmas when people take pictures. We had looked at putting it maybe in front of your new offices and then also down by Murphy's and Ruby. The only thing is, it is heavy. Is we'd like to find a place in the town with all your enormous amount of warehouse space is to store it and perhaps offer assistance sometimes placing it. It's just in the wind right now, but you know, just have that on the plate. But the star, if we can get it down before the summer moment season and all that stuff, that'd be helpful. Let me know and I'll come get it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Steve?
So I came here more about the regional sewer project and all. You know, the INI is a big deal or has been over the years in terms of our current sewer operation system and if we've got other places that are feeding into this, it becomes even more important. So their willingness to correct INI problems in the town of Rock, is that a blind check? Is it a maximum? Because I mean, it's a.
Yeah, I haven't seen the detail on it, Steve. I just know it's part of it. They're going to bring those two, to eventually be two force mains down. One will be coming down at Bill Brown's station, West Side Town. They want to come into probably Virginia Holler through Marshall Road. And I'm sure those two areas will be looked at extensively for INI issues and try to correct. You know, I haven't looked at the detail of that. I've seen very little of it.
The original one had $2 million set aside for.
Yeah, that's a number I saw.
That's still there.
They're, they're, they're still working on the numbers, but.
Right now, it says made it at $50 million for the whole project.
But yeah, Steve, I don't think you're going to go throughout town, but those two particular areas I'd be where they would look the hardest and try to resolve.
One thing's better than nothing.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a total system. And so if you still have substantial INI everywhere else, eventually it all has got to come into the same place. And so you've got to, we've got to fix our INI because it's, I mean, now you've got multiple people depending on all this. They shut you down, you shut down two other communities. So it's, you know, running these cameras, the seweroscopies over the past decade or so. I mean, there's a lot of INI problems within our system. So it's not just the lines that we're feeding, it's, it's everywhere. So I was just curious about the details, so.
Well, we're optimistic with our meter data that we have, the hour data on our lift stations, that we can isolate some more, some more areas where to do some INI work.
This definitely will be a much bigger deal with those two other towns coming in.
Well, 200, roughly. 110,000 gallons a day is the way to look at it. You know, that's what the flow is up there from all the two communities, Park and School. So yeah, that's a lot more flow.
We won't get out of that for a minute because they're going to be brand new.
Shouldn't be getting any for a minute for a while. You know, I just like to comment, you know, we had the option to go down, an opportunity to go down and look at the new building down there that we'd be moving into here soon. I don't know if anybody has any comments or anything about it. I think about everybody made it there at one time through the afternoon, but kind of a lot of space. You know, one thing I found fascinating that we really need to look into, don't know the cost, I'm sure it's not cheap, but they actually have a scanner and it can also print full-size maps. So they store everything electronically. And we really need to be looking into that for our document.
Like between $2,500 to $4,000.
I don't know. But anyway, we need to really look into it for document maintenance. That sounds good, lady, $2,500.
Is that the one in the courthouse?
It's the one we used to have.
Yeah.
I mean, but we've looked to replacement and that's kind of the.
But something to think about, put it on our wish list. We really need to maintain our maps and our data as we collect it better than what we historically have. So yeah, what else down there? But yeah, I guess my point is our data storage management is critical to the future Rockville part, just to be efficient. We still haven't really isolated where we want to have our meeting space at this point in time. We have a couple of options. Anybody else have any comments? It's amazing what they have down there. Backup generators, just amazing.
Huge.
We've never had that before.
It's going to be a great facility.
It's going to be very good. Service wealth or many years. Doing office, rich enough. I'll shut up. I'm good.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion, do adjourn?
Make a motion.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming.